Two laps.
Okay.
One. Skipper, you're gonna go.
I guess. If you guys know what project to add all the one not a voting number or so.
We're talking about. Very. Probably.
Which I don't know why they invite us.
What about this? Just. I don't know. It's the last one. That's.
Yeah.
You're welcome to go off the line. Ever too.
I'm good. Last time I was there, you guys did a job. I mean, not there, but listening.
Yeah. One of your.
Okay. Jacob online, it looks like. Okay, thank you. And then it doesn't give you an error? Won't open. Okay, that's.
Awesome.
Let's see. So I don't have time to do this. You said. So look.
Perfect. Exactly. About that.
But we're just. That's. And it's been that case. Oh, for every if they don't change the name on it or something, that's the only thing if they go in and edit anything on that tab to download meetings. Yeah, ICS. Then it doesn't. But if they don't change that meetings thing, then it doesn't work. Huh?
Cause.
We've tried everything. So. So here. Are you talking to Ken? Angel, I think so. Ask everybody. She's one of those weird things. Yeah. I just accepted such. Certain session. Huh? Just flag it. I'll remember it. Does it work if you accept it on your phone instead of the iPad? No, it still doesn't anything. Yeah. It's all stupid. Yeah. God. And there was quite a few that Tara used to, you know, conduct. So she had to change how she did it. Like the formatting, huh? Yeah. Nothing I have can just. It's all kind of give you grief. Yes. And it truly is the device, not me.
Oh, you know, the. No, that's.
Um, Mazari told us he's gonna be late. Jake's online. And do we know anything but Lars? I haven't heard from Lars. Okay. I made it on. Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of West Valley City Council. It is May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. We're beginning our meeting at four thirty PM. And we're in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have, um, we will excuse Councilman Norfelt. This evening. And we have at the table Councilman Hune. Councilman Fitziamanu is online with us. Councilman. Whitestone, Councilman Harmon, Council Christerson, and myself. We're also joined at the table by our city manager, Mr. Peely. And our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We have our meeting minutes from May twenty first, twenty twenty four. I'll turn those to the council for discussion or emotion.
Motion to. May twenty first.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And those standard approved. We now have our review of our agenda this evening. Did anyone have any questions? And did staff have any changes? Not happy. Okay. We'll proceed on that one at six thirty then. We'll go to our first public hearing. Which is GPZ one, twenty twenty four. Iowed by the Swensons for a change of. From large lot residential to light manufacturing. And we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick for our second week review.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of updates on. This application. So during our meeting. Last week, there's a question about the hours as well as just kind of the storage facilities in the city and other areas. So I know Nicole sent out an email this afternoon at two with some additional information. I'll I'll share that now. Just review that quickly. So the first is this map that we sent out. So again, this is just. Showing, um, the location of existing self-storage facilities in the city. So this is just based on the county county land use. So you can see where those are kind of distributed throughout the city. And for reference. Mouse is moving here so that the property in question is right where my cursor is. So that's. Kind of gives you some context as far as. Um, what's in the city and where this would be located in reference to the rest of those. And then the applicant also provided some information on the. Uh, just in terms of like available square footage. Terms of per capita area of of storage units. Uh, based on for for the city as well as some of the surrounding communities, as well as what the occupancy. Range is for the industry. So eighty and ninety percent is typical and we're at about eighty-six percent. Um, so again, just information from the applicant. Also in the email had the hour. So they have hours for the. Uh. For the office where you can come and, uh, you know, get information about renting. And then there's also hours for. Patrons that can come and and either drop items off or or check things out, which would be later than the office hours, but it's it would not be twenty-four hours.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Pastrick? Yes.
Yes, I didn't understand this one. How about the screen? Is that six? Residents per.
All right. So it's saying it were six square feet per six square feet of self-storage space per resident of the city.
Yeah, um, this is Jake. Mr. Pastor, this was precisely the kind of information that. Um, I was requesting. So yeah, when I got the email, I was satisfied and, um, it kind of confirms my. Uh, or I guess our suspicion from last week that. Um. We've got a lot of this. Um, we've definitely got our share when looking at. Eastside cities and other neighboring cities, but I appreciate this info. This was great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
You.
And then we can move to resolution or application GPZ two, twenty twenty four. General plan change.
So no new information on this one. Um, so as as the council knows, whenever we have a development agreement, we have two study meetings. This one actually doesn't. But since it's kind of related to the previous one, we kept the two together since they're next to each other. So no, no new information on this one.
And this is just to review changing the zoning on the animal, the property, the city property used for animal storage and garbage cans.
Correct. That's correct. Yes, sir.
I would guess if if we didn't pass. GPZ one. Then you probably wouldn't want to pass GPZ two.
We could in that it would, again, it would make at least the storage a conforming use that that's. Right. But i- if. Um, in in talking with Dan about that, he's he mentioned too that, uh, we we could always find a different home for the the garbage cans if we needed to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I will note for the record that Councilman Norfelt is here. All right, we'll move on to. This next one is a public hearing for our budget. And we'll turn the time over to Mr. Welch. For the reopening of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you mentioned, this is the, uh, budget opening for the final. Uh, adjustments for this fiscal year. This is our fourth budget opening and includes any new money that has been designated for specific projects, anything that might be rolling over for projects that were uncompleted. And new business that needs to be taken care of before the end of the fiscal year. Um, you have before you a number of different items. Uh, I will go over some of the bigger ones. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to provide any additional detail. And if I don't have it, I'm sure our staff does for you. So, um, as we go down, I'll ki- kind of hit the big ones that are more like six-figure items. Starting with item number nine, we have, uh, three items, one for seven hundred twenty-four thousand, one for one point three million, one for one point nine million. And what we're doing there is you'll remember there's the park improvements with the, uh, wetlands area and there's road improvements associated with that. The monies are being held in various places. The general fund, they're being held within the stormwater fund. And we're consolidating those into the capital improvements project fund so that they can be more easily tracked. And we have a better understanding of the cost of the project. And it's also easier for our staff to, uh, track their project. So that's all that is. It's just a matter of moving budget that's already existing into this. Uh, into the CIP. That's those three items. Um, the next page, we have, um, a one point four million dollar increase in, uh, events at the ma- at the Maverick Center. So what's happened over there is they've had a very good year. And like any type of retail business, when they have additional sales, they have additional expenses. So, um, a hundred percent of the expenses that they have incurred for these additional shows and programs that are going on is covered by revenue and it's actually creating more. Uh, more profit for the, uh, arena over there. And we've just done this so that we can accommodate the increase in business. Um, when we put the budget together, you'll recall that it's an estimate of where we expect, uh, the budgets to be. And as adjustments are necessary, um, then then they come up here. That particularly is very obvious when it comes to retail type operations and the Maverick Center is one of those. We also had an item, these other items, I think you've discussed recently, the purchase of the fleet vehicles. That was moved up this year. Mr. Johnson brought this up a week or two ago. Where, uh, Ford had called and said that they had vehicles that were available that haven't been available for a long time. And that rather than by the next year, he was recommending that we buy those this year. So this is the budget. Brought forward from next backwards from. Next year to this year, a little bit unusual for us to do that, but to take advantage of this opportunity, the we ordinarily wouldn't be able to have vehicles. Uh, consequently, the proposed budget for twenty twenty-five that will be coming to you has been reduced by that amount because the fleet purchase for that year will have already been made. See, um. The bottom two, we have a budget opening for four hundred twenty-one thousand and one for three hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. Both have to do with the operations of the cultural center. And the operations of the West Valley Arts Center, which has both been discussed rather extensively recently. This is the amount of budget that's expected to be needed to cover the rest of this fiscal year. And end out the fiscal year with an authorization from the city council. Um, that doesn't mean that additional revenue like the like the Maverick Center has occurred, but it will cover the authorization for us that they can continue to operate with. Uh, with proper authorization from the city council. And that is the, that's the entire. Remaining budget opening for this fiscal year.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Welch? All your added notes and everything has just made it so easy for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll now move to our ordinances and we'll start with ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-five. And we'll turn the time over to those.
Thank you. So, yep, this is just the ordinance that we discussed last week requested by the council. Um, basically it would just add a line in our code that says. Citizens' speakers shall limit themselves to city business and matters within the purview of the city council.
So public comment. Because we can't do anything about Granite School District or.
Right.
Okay. Or the Water District or.
Right. And it it kind of goes along with the personal attacks. We can request that, of course, but.
Right.
Freedom of speech. You can still say what they would like to say.
Right, but just kind of guidance.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Right, any questions on that? I forget to look at Jake, so. Help me watch that one. Okay, we'll now go to our resolutions. I will turn the time over to Chief Jacobs for resolution twenty-four dash ninety-one.
Good evening, Colleen Jacobs, Chief of Police. Um, I come before you today with a memorandum of agreement between our police department and. The Department of Public Safety. And when it's all said and done, it'll be all of the agencies. With police departments in Salt Lake County. Um, this agreement is for the Utah Law Enforcement Information Sharing Analytics Program, also known as Crime Tracer. Affectionately called Ulyssa. And, uh, this memorandum of agreement defines the roles and responsibilities governing access to and disclosure of the data shared with the program. So this is all of our terms and conditions.
Okay. And there's no cost associated with it. It's just an agreement saying everybody plays well together.
There is a initial startup cost that the Department of Public Safety is covering of. Thirty thousand dollars and then they'll pay fifteen dollars, fifteen thousand dollars for maintenance every year. If the maintenance exceeds that, then that'll be divided between all of the agencies.
Okay. To the council, any questions? Yes.
Question, do we have a similar statewide or national?
Yes, so this is actually replacing an existing program that we've been using called Palantir. Um, the gist of the program is if we have, uh, an individual that we're investigating. We can, uh, basically plug plug them into this program and see what other agencies they have reports with. So we can. Um, get the report information from those other agencies and. Determine a a history, a pattern of history.
But this is just specific to Salt Lake County.
This one is specific to Salt Lake County. Um, just because this this memorandum of agreement is with the Salt Lake County Consortium. Uh, but they will, they do do it statewide since that's why it's, that is why Department of Public Safety is the one that's housing it at their CYAC Center. Their, uh. State. Information Analytics Center.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now turn the time to Mr. Johnson. To award or discuss the awarding of a contract to MC Green and Sons.
Good afternoon, Dan Johnson, Public Works Director. Um, this resolution will authorize the city to execute an agreement with MC Green and Sons to build. The Brighton Canal Storm Drain Project. The amount of little over two million dollars. It's paper out of stormwater utility. Uh, you you may recall, I believe we've had discussions about the Brighton Canal. They ceased operation a couple of years ago and. Um, which has left. Quite a few. Odds and ends of things to clean up. So the section of the Brighton Canal between Redwood Road. And, uh, about twenty-six hundred west across two fifteen. So from Redwood to two fifteen and even across two fifteen. The canal ran in the middle and then on either side of the canal was a storm drain ditch that that the city maintained each of those ditches. And so adjoining properties would date would would drain into the ditches on either side of the canal. Because the canal would never accept storm water to be discharged into that canal. And so, um, since then, since ceasing operation, the canal company has been working with. Adjoining property owners to to try to, uh, convey any property rights that they have in exchange, you know, to to monetize the any land, um, holdings that they have. And and so they would get adjoining property owners and sell them their easement and those property owners would move in and occupy that space that was once occupied by the canal. Um, which still left us with the problem of having the ditch on either side. So. We've been working with property owners and and it brought several of these, um, right-of-way acquisitions. Uh, to the council. Generally, these, actually, I don't think we pay for any of these acquisitions. They've all been donated because there's a benefit to the property owners to. To have this ditch piped and and to get rid of the ditch and it allows them to use property and. And it allows us to have a a much more manageable, uh, drainage system. So. This project will absolutely clean up a lot of problems for us. It'll also remove the. The existing bridge, the old canal bridge underneath Decker Lake Boulevard, um. Which is the road that parallels two fifteen, just east of two fifteen. And, um, and so it it kind of cleans up a lot of those problems for us and. And it's a project that we expedited just because of the, uh, the the. Property acquisitions that were that were beginning and people beginning to occupy that property. Uh, that that we would need to put a pipe. So. It's our recommendation to award this to MC Green and Sons. This is the same contractor that is building the park improvements. Uh, the the wetland park. And. As you recall, MC Green and Sons is is building the the wetland park improvements. MC Contractors is building the the roadway improvements on Parkway Boulevard. This is MC Green. The same, the same ones that are building the wetland park. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Johnson? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have our consent consent agenda, which is, um, our typical. Real estate contracts, easements, and deeds. Most of, all of it is to do with the Lancer Way Reconstruction Project. Anybody have questions on that one? Okay. Council calendar. Did anybody have any questions on? Calendar? You're all saving room on your calendar for the parade on whatever day that is, the fifteenth? At ten? Okay. All right. And then new business, any future, potential future agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Council reports.
Went to the. Open House of the Mill, Southern Community Colleges. Incubator, basically. And I just wondered if we had one of those in West Valley. It was pretty cool. They have a lot of resources for those that are starting businesses and. Um. It worked really hand in hand with Sandy City, because it's right there in Sandy City, but, uh. It was pretty neat. It's a lot of great resources and a lot of synergy. With the the third floor there, they have desks you can rent and offices you can rent for people that are starting business. So I don't know if. You know of anything in this in the city that. It's like that, but. It's great. Got some, uh. Some flyers and handouts that I'll scan in and send everybody.
That would be just something to watch for in the future. Right encourage.
Yeah, be great to. Find out whether. Do something like that in West Valley.
Thank you. Seeing no others?
I'm sorry.
You're good.
I did have a. A potential agenda item. And that was, um, if we recall. Um, House Bill four eleven a while back and the Utah Renewable Communities, uh, situation, um, we as a city, uh, the iteration of the council at that time opted. Not to go through with the renewable community communities. A plan, but we still did pass a resolution, um, to head towards or to achieve a hundred percent renewable by twenty thirty. I'm wondering if there's any appetite in, uh, or actually, I guess I'm asserting that it's probably a good time to discuss, um, our renewable. Strategy and that commitment that we did make to our constituents. Uh, whether or not that involves the renewable communities. Plan, which I've heard, you know, they are. Still entertaining communities to join that now that, uh, they've got additional information and projections. Um, I. I don't know if I have an opinion on that right now, but at least this general strategy and and, uh, circling back on that. Resolution and commitment we made a while back on that renewable strategy. That's, uh, something I would love to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Would that be a communication with Mr. Springmeyer?
Yeah.
Okay. Does everybody else have the appetite for that one?
Yes.
Not really.
I think we. Can report on.
Yeah, let's have him give us a report and then we can. Choose to or not to move forward. Okay. You'll take care of that one. Thank you. Okay. Um, well, now go to our. Report from Mr. Welch for our redevelopment agency, Housing Authority, and Municipal Building Authority meetings.
Thank you. You will be seeing a little bit of me in the next few weeks. Um, the, uh, budget. We have four entities that, um, we adopt and we propose a budget for. We have the the city as a whole. And then we also have these three entities, the Redevelopment Agency, the Housing Authority, and the Building Authority that exist for the accommodation of services for the city. And, uh, what we have done by tradition, tradition, and seems to be have been a good thing, is we have. Um, held open the option of adopting the judgment living. We've talked about truth and taxation. Hearing that we'll do in August, um, when we adopted the tentative budget, we set a date for that. That applies to the general fund and to the other funds that operate under the city. These and these particular operations, the Housing Authority, RDA, and the West Valley Building Authority. Uh, do not fall under the truth and taxation umbrella. So we end up adopting those, um, next week. They'll be done for the for the end of the year and then you won't see anything in these unless there's a budget opening. So with that, uh, the redevelopment agency, uh, budget is, um, slightly higher than it was last year. Last year, the budget was twenty-two million, six hundred. Thousand, thirty-eight dollars. This year it'll be twenty-nine million, seven seventy-four, oh, seventy-seven. That represents additional increment mostly coming in off of the Northwest EDA. Uh, Mr. Springmeyer is, I think, trying to bring us up to speed with that. And it's one of our most active areas. And it's starting to bring us some significant, uh, increment. So that basically represents the growth that we're getting out of that area. Although there is a little bit of growth in some of the other areas. Uh, that will be the final budget for that one. If we could go to the Housing Authority, uh, the budget last year was five million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This year. It will be five million, two hundred thousand dollars. And that represents a change in the estimate of the vouchers that we typically receive per year. If that ends up being, as I guess I just mentioned, that's an estimate. If that ends up changing throughout the year and they have additional vouchers that come in or additional expenditures, uh, that will certainly come back to the city council for reauthorization. And that's the, uh, one-page budget we'll basically be adopting there. Uh, the. Building Authority is established by the city to accommodate debt service and payments for capital projects. Buildings, as the name implies. Uh, we are actually within five hundred and fifty dollars of what last year's budget was. It's kind of remarkable. Taken a lot of years to get there. Uh, last year it was seven million, five hundred forty-three, nine fifty-seven. This year it's seven million, five thirty-nine, four twenty-five. And the, um. Uh, that basically reflects. Excuse me, the, um. I guess the flat nature of the debt service that we've been able to accommodate over the years. Uh, we've tried to rather than have balloons that come up with most of our debt service, if possible, when it's been refinanced. Or else when it's been issued, we try and make those payments level, uh, unless, of course, there's a compelling reason or an expected income stream in the future that might. Be dedicated specifically for those payments. This year we were basically exactly what we were last year. And, uh, that's. Kind of an unusual thing, but that that explains that. So. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions from the? Council on this one?
And a question on the Housing Authority.
Sure.
Funds that are allocated to vouchers. Is a hundred percent of that used towards vouchers or come and use it? The city uses or the Housing Authority uses for. Operating administration.
Like administrative costs and things like that. Um, if if it'd be okay, I'd like to invite Mr. Morris to provide a little detail on that. Is that okay?
Thank you, Mr. Welch.
Thought you'd love that.
So the Housing Authority is is the entire Housing Authority is funded, um, through the federal government. And, um, when they, when they. Uh, award us voucher amounts, it's per voucher. So the Housing Authority runs on five hundred and thirty-eight. Vouchers. Each one of those vouchers varies. Because sometimes you have a. Cause sometimes you have a household that's comprised of, uh. Husband and wife and five kids. And sometimes it's a single person living in it. So that amount varies. So we're funded. According to the five hundred and thirty-eight vouchers. And then that translates to whatever it translates to. Sometimes we can't actually house five hundred and thirty-eight people. Because we only, uh. Because the, the families are larger. Sometimes we do know that because the families are, are smaller. But in conjunction with that, there's an administrative. Um, cost that we're awarded that's separate to the actual vouchers. That's probably a long way of answering.
Is that about ten percent?
Um, the admin fee go up, uh, but it's somewhere right around there. There's, it's a, it's another one of those complex federal. Um, you know, budgets on how they do your admin. I, it's, it's somewhere right around there.
Did that answer?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Welch? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that's the end of our business. We do have need for a closed session. For potential contract? How would you like that, sir?
Let's see disposition of real estate.
Disposition of real estate. Someone would make that motion?
For a closed session for disposition of real estate and. Calling that a, for sure.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fitziamanu?
Halli.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune? Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mary Lane?
Yes.
Motion passes, you have.
Thank you. We'll give five minutes or so to. Clear the room and. And we'll proceed and no other business will be talked about after our close session.
Nicole, do I need a separate link or should I just stay on this one?
Yes, I will, um, email you a separate link.
Okay, thank you.